All right, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the lower Parks and Township manager. In typical fashion, I will give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. Today is a workshop session of the board. We have a number of action items on the agenda, fairly short agenda, actually, this evening. However, concluding board and chairman and board members' comments, the board will take action on three items. The first of which is action to approve Enders Insurance as the township's exclusive broker of record for property and liability coverage. This is an annual action item the board takes. After that, the board will take action to adopt two resolutions, both of which pertain to sewer module, sewer planning modules, one being for the cider press station subdivision, and the next being for Wingstop at 4917 Jonestown Road. Following those items, the board will hear any last announcements and make a motion to adjourn the meeting. That being said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
This time, I'd like to call the board's supervisors' meeting to order. Mr. Navarro will be leading us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before the meeting tonight, we did have budget at 5:30, which was open to the public. That was our Parks and Recreation budget. And after that, we met in executive session, and we will not be meeting afterwards in executive session. Public comment. Is there anybody under public comment? If you could please state your name and your address?
Yes, good evening. My name is Stephen Blaine. I live at 5732 Kenwood Avenue. This evening, I'm here to talk about the SOWR project again. Ms. Lindsay, I appreciate you coming out here recently to take a look. Has the other supervisors got a chance to get out there and take a look at the process? Anybody? Guys got to see the disaster out there right now? Some of my concerns is, I understand that we gave an extension to the contract. However, there's a lot of part of that project that could have been completed in time. As like up in Palmer, up on top of Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook Road itself, those doesn't have utility issues. With that, these projects could have been completed on time. Is there any recourse that we're looking into that why that wasn't completed?
I'm going to put that over to Mr. Gutschall because he deals with the staff.
Yes, sir. So just to go back to what I had mentioned previously, it has been noted a few times, actually, with regard to various portions of the project not being complete at any given time, or periods of time during which people may not see crews out there physically doing work. Again, the contractor has until a date to complete all work. And it is not the township's responsibility nor prerogative or ability per the contract to direct that the contractor establish work at any given time. So if there are lulls in work that, you know, you may see from day to day, that is part of the contractor's responsibility to determine how they appropriately deploy their resources. So that's the best answer that I can give to that specific question at this time.
Mr. Gutschall, have you been out there?
I have.
You have, okay. With that said, we live there, okay? And we continually get answers from you that this is a construction zone. That's our residence. That's where we live. That's our community, okay? I've lived there 20 years, and the concern is the job is not getting done. And we've talked, I talked to the actual people on the ground, okay? And they're saying it's not going to get done by December 1st, okay? That's the curbs, the sidewalks, and the macadam. Now, that's what they're telling me. That's what the inspectors are saying. It's, you're crazy if you think it's getting done. So do we have a plan to get this done, okay? Because it's not going to get done, and we're telling you. We were here in May, we were here in August, now we're back in September, and I'm telling you, it's not going to get done. The cement crews are working at a snail's pace. And we want our community back, okay? The roads are impassable in some degree, okay? You've got to do five miles an hour, or you're going to break your car up. And we'd like to have that accomplished. And we're telling you now, it's not going, we're going to be here at the end of the year at SOWR authority meeting, and it didn't get done. So what is the recourse at that point in time? Again, getting back to the extension, up where Mr. Hawkins is here, he lives up on Palmer, there's no utility issues up there, okay? That could have been accomplished and done by October 1st. That's not getting done. So there should have been some questions. What are you guys doing to, you know, our only course of action is come here every week and to bring you updates and tell you that you're not getting it done. The supervisors, you're in charge of Mr. Gutschall, and somebody's not getting it done.
Can I ask a question, Brad?
Yeah.
Because this keeps coming up, that there's a contract, and they say they're going to meet the contract. And people are saying, well, they're not working, and we're saying, well, even if they're not working now, they still have to meet the contract. And they say they'll meet the contract. When they're not working, where are they? Are they in other parts of the township? Or are they in other parts of this project that people may not see? I know this isn't your, you may not know this, but I think that's what people, really frustrates people, is they see nothing being done, and we're saying, the contract, the contract, which is our legal restriction. But are they, are they elsewhere in the township, or are they doing projects? They have several contracts going on at once, and they're doing contracts in other municipalities. And then as long as they meet the requirements and the deadlines of each one of these contracts, they're fulfilling their obligation.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, they could be, they could be anywhere outside the municipality doing work on any of their other contracts. That's the case.
So let me ask you this. Has staff been meeting with them to see if they're going to make the ending date? We did send all the residents out there a letter, and it had what they were going to do this week, this week, this week, and this week. So you got that letter, I think you said, last Tuesday when you were all here. So that's a week now. Have they done what they were supposed to in that week on that letter?
Yes, I'll be meeting, I will be meeting tomorrow with owners of the company, and we will be discussing an update to the project and, you know, continuing to hold their feet to the fire, if you will, with meeting those deadlines and ensuring that we're keeping progress with this. There are going to be times even after that meeting, it's just the simple course of the contract, that you will not see people out there doing work. That's going to continue to happen. Because we, again, we have no direction on their workforce. But again, we will be meeting with them, with company representatives and owners tomorrow to get an update.
Well, I think a lot of the question is, it's been a year and a half, two years, that they have been tore up out there. And like Mr. Blaine said, there's areas that they could be working on. They know they have a timeline. And I know you keep saying contract, but they have a timeline, and, you know, we're almost to the middle, well, we are going to be in a couple of days, the middle of September. Then they have October and November. There's a lot of work, you know? And I don't want to hear, we're waiting on the utilities, because there's a lot of areas out there that could be done that you don't need to have the utilities move because of the stormwater. And I know there was a resident that we received email from, from over on the Devonshire Heights area. And, you know, the, one of our staff got back to him, and he was, you know, blaming it on the utilities. And this man works for UGI, and he said, you can't blame it on UGI. They've been done for over a year, you know? So, yeah.
That conversation, ma'am, may have been hearsay. I mean, that resident you were speaking to may not know anything to do with this project just because he works for UGI.
Well, he's involved, he's involved in the project, you know, not with UGI, but as a resident.
Understood, understood. But I just caution the board taking comments out of context like that as it relates to this project specifically.
Well, and the question for us is the same as it is for Brad. We have, we're representing the township. We have no more authority than he does. He has no more than we do. So if he can't, if the township can't dictate their schedule, then us telling Brad to do it doesn't help because he has no more legal authority than we do. I just was curious as to, you know, where are they? They're obviously not sitting home losing money. They're, I assume they're doing other projects. And what happens if they don't make the deadline, a contractual deadline?
Good question. And actually, for that, maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Hines. I just, and just to give you some context, a lot of, at any time that we seem like we can't provide a direct answer, or it seems like we're trying to, you know, get out of providing a specific answer. Just to give some clarity to the board, I mean, the contract that we're talking about is over 700 pages long. It's a very technical, very detailed project, contract. There are various sections that relate to various portions of the workforce here. We have two engineering firms that are helping to address this project, one for stormwater, one for sanitary sewer. So oftentimes, it's not as easy as just providing an easy answer. I hope that makes sense. But I hope that Mr. Hines can provide some direct answer to your specific question.
Comment, I mean, we're kind of getting in the weeds here in the details. I mean, we live there, okay? It's unsafe. There's holes left in the road, and they roll back, Ms. Lindsay came out and saw it. Holes left in the road, unacceptable. Putting equipment on people's sidewalks, sidewalks, knots taped off. And we need to get ahead of that. As the township, your job is to make our community as safe as possible. And regardless of contract, contract, whatever, it's a township it's a township's responsibility to make this, our community, safe. Sidewalks, curbs, no holes in the road. Make the road passable. And it's just not happening. And, you know, I got to put the direct blame on the supervisors. I'm sorry. I mean, you-
Well, what can we do? What can we do?
All I'm saying is, we came in May, and we told you then, okay? And I was the SOWR Authority. And four, five of you sit on the SOWR Authority Board. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
I'm correct. So you guys heard the complaint then. Then we came in August, and we're telling you it's not going to get done. The job's not getting done. It's continually getting worse. As preparing the roads, the speed on the roads, it's just nonstop complaints. We need to get ahead of it. And with that, I'm going to leave that up to you. But somehow, we need to get ahead of it. If you need to have a meeting with the contractor, say, this is what needs to get done, because it's not going to get done. And when you inspectors are sitting there telling me, who's been out there all summer, that it's not going to get done. They even lost their mind. They think all them curbs and sidewalks are going to get done. And a rough coat of pavement. And we're, now we're accepting just a rough coat of pavement. Not the roads paved, which we were promised. Just a rough coat of pavement till next year for the full pavement. So now, that's pushed back till next year. And who knows when they'll do that then? Because once they leave here, they're in Halifax. They don't care about this job now. That's where their crews are at right now. So that's my comment. I'm going to let it go there so somebody else can talk.
I think we need to meet with them, and we need to ask the question, what can we do to help? We're at the point now where what can the township do? You know, what can we do?
There's still a question on the table. And Jason, you're going to tell us what happens if they don't meet the contract deadline?
Sure, if I may. And for anybody that may not know me, I'm Jason Hines. I'm the, I work for the Township Consulting Engineer and the Authority's Stormwater Pointed Engineer. And to answer your question, Mr. Judd, there are stipulations in the contract about damages that can be assessed if there aren't, if the dates set, the contract times, aren't met. And just to give a further update on that extension that was mentioned, that hasn't been executed to date. So that was, that was proposed to the contractor. Contractor hasn't executed it and sent it back. So as things set today, the contract times are just as they were when the initial agreement was executed.
Jason, I'm going to go back to the sewer meeting a couple of weeks ago. And that was brought up. And my understanding, and Mr. Weaver was here, my understanding, because we told the people that were here that now the contract has been extended for 60 days to December the 1st. So what's gone on? I mean, we told these people, you know, in that meeting, that it was December the 1st.
Yeah, that hasn't been executed as a formal contract document as of tonight. That was a proposal that was sent by the Authority to Dolee. Dolee has not signed it.
So what the Authority did its part, the contractor hasn't done its part.
The contractor hasn't agreed to the change order.
So if they haven't signed it right now, then it's October the 1st.
Yes.
So obviously, they're not going to meet October the 1st. So what happens when they don't meet October the 1st?
Well, that's when that language in the contract can be invoked at the discretion of the township, of the owner, of course, to apply those damages if they feel-
But Dolee, if they're not even near doing it, they will, they will submit the paperwork for the extension, right? You're just saying they haven't now, or you're saying maybe they won't?
I'm-
You can't say that.
I can't say. I know that they have claimed that they don't feel like the time that was proposed is adequate. They feel like they're entitled to more time. That was kind of what was, felt was fair, based on the facts we had at the time, and was extended to them.
And the last question, it's for Jason or Brad, because people are getting frustrated, and they keep saying the township can do something. And I keep asking, what can we do? And doesn't seem we have any leverage or a hammer or a legal, a legal way other than appealing to them. But people insist that there's something you can do, and you're not doing it. And that's frustrating for me, because I don't see what we can do. I don't see what the hammer is. I don't see what our leverage is. So is there something I'm missing? Or is, as long as they meet the contractual deadlines?
Well, can I jump in real quick?
I mean, just, I need, well, I need an answer. Is there something, is there something? Because the implication, is there something you can do and you're not doing? And if there is, I'd like to know it.
Yeah.
Don't pay them.
Yeah. So yesterday, there was, we had a good staff meeting about this project as it has been occurring, an internal staff meeting. And I asked the room full of staff, as it sits today, you know, what are the deficiencies? Again, we're governed by the contract. There's 700 pages, okay? What are the deficiencies in the field as it relates to this contract? The two outstanding deficiencies as it relates today, well, there are multiple deficiencies, but the two kind of major buckets of deficiency as it relates to the project today are the, I'll say, generally speaking, the condition of the roadway. And the cleanliness, I'll call it the cleanliness of the site. So the debris, the dirt, the rocks, that sort of nature. And so, I mean, we are in the process now of, we have actually sent them a letter noting those deficiencies and providing them a certain set number of days to correct those deficiencies. So they, those are the types of remedies that we can deploy, and we have deployed. I mean, there have been meetings continuously with the contractors to note deficiencies and provide certain, you know, remedies of time.
But that's not a hammer. That's just bringing it to their attention. There's nothing we can do to force them.
Well, as Mr. Hines had noted, I mean, there are provisions within the contract for liquidated damages and those sorts of things. That would be the ultimate hammer. As Mr. Navarro had mentioned, pay them. You know, that's really the ultimate hammer, is their pay. And the contract does provide for those remedies.
But that's at the end.
Could, oh, it could be during, it could be during. I mean, they are paid, I think we send them, I think they invoice us monthly for this project. So there are those remedies throughout the project, but-
I mean-
Let me ask you this.
Well, wait, Mr. Navarro-
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but, you know, probably, you know, from a legal standpoint, you know, we get to October 1st, you know, then we kind of go, well, you know, you haven't signed that extension, and you haven't done these things. And so, you know, we're not going to pay you until we have some resolution, until they come out and start, you know, doing that. I think we have enough evidence stacked up, you know, that they could have managed this better. And I think it's safe to say, and you can tell them that I said this, it seems like it was mismanaged, you know, in the way that they're, that they rolled this plan out. Because if it were true, that they didn't, I mean, we, the reason we did the extension is because there's a calculation that you guys did, right? And with the amount of rain and weather events and stuff that we had, that really, they probably, you were willing to give them that extension. And that's why we said okay to that. So, you know, but, so for them to say that's not even enough time, it's like, well, sure, but you left and went to other jobs. And I get it, you know, I own a company like that. So, but at the same time, let me clarify, it's a drilling company. But I have, you know, I have contracts like that. And, but I finish a job, and then I move on to the next job, you know? And that's, they could have managed it better. So if they're not out there, at least with a crew or a couple of crews finishing sidewalks, and just, you know, sporadically doing it, I would like to know why. And I think that you can tell them that October 1st, if they're not finished, or whenever that, and they don't sign the extension, we're going to ask them, at least me personally, would ask that somebody be here to represent them so that I can ask them personally what they were doing. And I think the people in the community would like to ask them as well.
Well, and I know-
And I think that we owe that to them, because, to the people in the community.
Exactly.
Because we gave a contract to Dolee. They get a lot of contracts from us. And I think they owe us, I think they owe us some answers. And I think they owe the community some answers. And I know that everybody on this board agrees to that. But that's where we're, that's where we're going to be. I'm getting pretty mad about it. We're going to have to have them come in and sit here and ask them, and answer the questions. They got to sit in the hot seat.
I understand they have a deadline. But before that deadline occurs, I'm more concerned about the safety factors that have occurred between the time it started and the deadline. And who's responsible at that point to make sure that all safety concerns are addressed? It's one thing to finish the project, you know, with a deadline. But during that period, I think somebody has to be responsible for ensuring that all safety requirements are met. And who's, is that Dolee? Is that our engineers? Who's responsible for that?
Yeah, Dolee is, as the contractor, is fully responsible for the safety of the work site for all individuals at all times.
But we've been told numerous times about the size of the holes. You know, putting a cone nearby at night isn't going to keep somebody from falling into it, for example.
Yeah.
Who's checking to make sure that Dolee is doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Who oversees Dolee from the township? Because if you go out there today, those sidewalks are definitely a safety issue. People are going up their driveways, and I'm sure you've been there, Jason. There are stones. They're up and down their driveways with stones. So the sidewalks, the curb, you can't walk on the sidewalks, okay? The curbs, and then the holes that were there on Friday. Who oversees, as Norm says, those holes on Friday? They were like four or five feet deep, you know?
They shouldn't be allowed to quit on a Friday afternoon.
And let holes with-
And someone takes a look at it and says, you know, we can't leave it in this condition over the weekend, for example.
Right.
You know, that it could create a problem.
No, and to date, I think a lot of that has fallen on the inspection staff that has been out there in the field. In fact, just last week, staff had asked us to, on a weekly basis now, start to look at that on Thursday afternoons. And I myself went out yesterday, and I agree with everything that's been said. I did notice things that were concerning. And it led to, as Mr. Gutschall mentioned, issuance of a defective work notice today. Pretty much requiring that they address the areas where the sidewalks have been removed and not replaced, the condition of the roadways. We do have the job conference scheduled for tomorrow, where we're going to hopefully get some answers from Dolee on these things and come up with a resolution to get to the conclusion of this project as efficiently and effectively as we can. There are some, some things that we're trying to leverage within the contract to make sure that these areas that have sat without any attention are restored. That was part of the defective work notice that went out today. So staff is taking it very seriously. We're trying to leverage all the things that we can to make this-
We know that you are. And like I said before the meeting, I saw him out there driving the other day, yesterday, I think it was. So, I mean, you know, we know that you're taking it seriously. But, you know, I think that if this, it's unfortunate that it's, you know, that these folks have to pay for this. But I think if we've learned something, we really need to tighten up our contracts, right? So we need to tighten that up so that there's some kind of a, you know, like a payment schedule, right? Because there's no better way to get work done than to say, you're not meeting my schedule. I'm not going to pay you for the work that you've supposedly done. I mean, if they've, if we're paying them for the work, I mean, they did do a lot of work. Let's not leave it, like, they really have completed a lot of stuff. And as Mr. Gutschall said, now we're looking at the, it's kind of, you know, I get it. To them, they're like, well, it's sidewalks, but that's what's important to us also. So, you know, just because we're at the end here, and we're almost there, doesn't mean that they get to go, okay, well, it's not making us the money we need it to. We're going to move all our crews somewhere else, which is what they're doing.
Well, Jason, what doesn't, you alluded to the fact that you thought that Dolee felt that he needed more time. Well, it doesn't, doesn't calculate in my mind that if they need more time, why are they off doing something else?
And not working out there.
And is there an incentive in the contract to give them some type of a bonus if they finish it early?
There's no bonus for an early finish. However, one of the benefits of issuing that notice that we did today is it puts them on notice. Essentially, they have three days to respond to us with a plan on how they're going to reconcile these issues. The contract does allow for the work that's not being done and considered defective to be done by others, and then set off as a payment against them in the future. So that is an option that could be considered and ultimately leveraged if desired by the township.
I have a quick question. Go ahead, Brad.
And two, we had this type of a project out in the blues, which was probably like 6:00, 6:25, okay? We had no issues out there. I mean, you might have gotten a call, hey, they planted the wrong tree, or they didn't fix my fence. So what I can't understand is, they had that big of a project there. What went wrong back here, okay? Something definitely was mismanaged back here. Now, another question, what if they don't sign that contract? And it comes to be October 1st? Can they walk away?
They're not allowed to terminate without cause. It's very clear in the contract that that's the case. Technically, the substantial completion date has come and passed. That was, that was August 1st. October 1st is the final completion date currently, as things stand tonight.
So we, in the contract, we can allow them an additional 60 days, which would be December 1st, right?
That's what was proposed with the change order, yes.
Okay. So, and if they ask for another 60 days, which is 120, who agrees on that?
It would need to be substantiated and agreed to by the owner and the engineer. Essentially, we all sign off on those change orders, which adds them as formal contract documents.
All right, because I cannot believe what these people are going through. I mean, we've all been out there. It's ridiculous. A year and a half, two years, and I was out there again yesterday.
Well, I wanted to ask that, Ms. Lindsay. Perspective wise, where does this rank as far as the size and the length of the project? The size, is this average? Or is this bigger than normal?
For my experience with these mini basin projects in the program, it's comparable to the others that have happened over the years.
And the length of time it's taken? Because it happened in my neighborhood, and I remember it being a while. And I remember it, you just don't have your neighborhood. But I don't, I couldn't swear that it lasted this long in Paxtonia, the Country View area.
It looked like a bomb went off in the neighborhood.
Well, this one looks like a-
Did it last this long? Do you remember?
I don't know.
Did it? Okay.
Worse than a bomb.
All right. So it might have lasted about the same. So I know, this, when I, it's the first time I was running for supervisor is when I was doing this. And I really was looking for ways to communicate better. And we actually do communicate better. But we found out with this that for ongoing basis, we don't communicate enough. But I want to just, perspective as far as the size and scope, and if this was quite different.
And Mr. Judd, actually, if I may, it's a good, I mean, it's a good question in context. And Mr. Hines, please correct me if I'm wrong. But we do have many, many years in contracts worth of experience with Dolee. And not to oversimplify it or to kind of skirt responsibility, in this project, I understand it's been different, our experience. But up until this date, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we, Dolee has been known, they have, their MO is to have contracts, you know, all around the midstate and remove crews from our projects to go off doing other projects. And then not return until much later in our project to finally finish up on time. They always finish on time, but they always, at the last minute, finish on time. And what we've experienced in this project, again, how many projects have we had with Dolee? Many, many, many. And so I'll say this to say that maybe we've given them a bit benefit of the doubt with regard to our experience with that contractor to say, hey, this is their MO. They do leave the site, but they always return and finish the job on time.
And there's someone in another municipality waiting for them to finish their job. They're happy that they've shown up to do it.
And I didn't mean that to oversimplify or, again, pass responsibility. But it's been our experience that they do this, but they always return on time, and-
Well, obviously, this time they didn't.
Like I said, with this project, we've had a different experience, but-
I mean, they have two weeks, two, three weeks at the most. And there's no way this is going to be, going to be done. No way.
Well, there was weather and utilities, but if there's something wrong with the contract and how we do the contract, then that's on us. And that, that's something that we would fix going forward. But for now, they're living up to the contract.
But weather-wise, we really haven't had any rain. So, you know, that would have been holding them, you know, holding them from not, from not working.
Weather was cited early on.
It was early, right?
Weather was cited early on.
Correct. I mean, that's from the last meeting. I mean, I missed that one, the meeting in, what was it, May, for the Authority?
The sewer meeting.
Yeah. But, but the last one was, there was weather early on, I think. Yeah, but, but the last one was, there was weather early on, I think, that caused all those delays and then the recalculation, right?
Yeah. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt there, but the major considerations were the weather, the utility, relocations, and there was, there was additional scope that was added to the project really throughout the duration as things would come in. There were some areas where storm sewer was extended, sanitary sewer was extended. So that did add some probably legitimate time to their schedule.
I think it's just important to remember for tomorrow, they're going to fall back on, well, it's not our fault that those things happened, right? You're smart enough to say, hey, look, you know.
That applies to finishing the project.
Yeah.
But while the project's going on, I'm still concerned about the safety factor.
Well, I appreciate that too, but I think that's, that's a factor. But I think that at the end of the day, it's like, okay, those things happened, you know, and you still have utilities, but as, you know, members of the community are saying, and when we drive around, you can see, you know, all those areas that are affected or unfinished aren't going to be issues with the utilities. And so they could certainly be there at least correcting, you know, 50% of what, or probably more of what's not corrected, you know? So they can't really fall back on, on the, on those, you know, those issues, but.
Well, I'm concerned, and I'm going to go back to a couple of weeks ago with the sewer authority meeting, and the four of us do sit on that, that we were told prior to coming out here that the extension was December the 1st. It was told to the public that was sitting here that the extension was till December 1st. And now you're telling us that they haven't executed. So why did the township tell the public here December 1st when it was never executed?
Madam Chair, I wasn't at that meeting and, I mean.
Well, the director of the sewer, the director of the sewer told us prior to coming, which we didn't know until we came. And then you had the public here and they told the public that it would be December the 1st. So how, how could we tell the public, these residents, December 1st?
I think it's because we authorized the extension and they, they just haven't filled out the paperwork. I mean, they're not, they're going to need the extension, right? Is that? Well, is that, well, they, they would have to, I think, do both, but they, they're not going to get, they're going to need the extension, right?
I don't see how it wouldn't benefit them to.
So we assume they're going to, they're going to fill out the paperwork.
We'll ask that question tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll find out.
One question we ask them.
We'll find out tomorrow. But I'm pretty sure the reason that Mr. Weaver said that was because the township had agreed and put it out there and they just haven't filled, but they're.
We weren't told that it wasn't signed.
No, because it probably had, the decision had just been made, I think. But it seems unrealistic that it's not going to be signed, so I don't, I don't think it's an issue.
Don't you think they don't want to sign it because they want more time? They want more than the 96 again.
That's exactly what they're.
They said they're not going to do the MCA, the final MCA until next year.
I don't know. I don't know that agreeing to that would preclude another extension. Or do you only get them 60 at a time? Or I don't know if there's a strategic reason why they wouldn't sign it.
No, I mean, they're able to submit change proposals at any time throughout the contract.
I know what you're saying. They might be ultimately looking for that, but I don't think that's a reason why they're doing this, because they could, they can do, you know, ask for those anytime. I could be wrong.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Gutschall, because the board, of course, is getting blamed for everything, and we've been trying, trying. So staff will make that decision if they extend that contract past December 1st? Or does that come before the board?
Yeah, I mean, as I explained, the board is the one that approves that extension. It's a contract extension, I think, much like the board does at various times for change orders where you see time extensions, that's like the mechanism through which that would, that would occur, so.
Well, I personally would like to know it ahead of time and not a half an hour before the meeting. So, and I think we, you need to keep in touch with us and the other members of the sewer authority after that meeting tomorrow, so we know where we're at. Because we can't wait till November, you know, when the sewer authority meets again.
Yeah, I mean, well, we would certainly be waiting on the contractor to request the extension, so.
Well, I'm talking about the meeting you're having tomorrow.
Right, if we, if we seek, if we learn any additional clarity to their, to their timeline with regard to the actual extension of the contract, yes, we will let you know.
Can I ask a question? John Packer, 5723 Ken Wadav. So if you did, you just said they approve it, they didn't know about it, so how, who actually asked for the extension? Did you, did the township, or did DOLI actually ask for it? If they didn't sign it, it appears to me they didn't ask for it. You gave it to them.
There is no extension, provided there is no extension on the books at this point. I don't, I think it was gone through discussion.
Who offered the extension?
I believe that.
I mean, you as the township manager, according to, in your job description.
Yes.
It says, "You shall attend to all letting of contracts with prior approval of the Board of Supervisors in due form of the law. And ye shall," meaning you, "the performance and faithful execution of the same." So to me, it all falls on you. And, you know, your answer at the last meeting, when you said you're more removed from the project than Mr. Weaver is, certainly didn't instill any confidence, as far as I'm concerned, that you're even capable of doing the job.
Wait, wait, wait. What are we talking about here? This is just paperwork. Either they're going to seek it or they're not going to seek it.
No.
It'll come before the board.
It's a, it seems to be a system problem here. She asked the question, who approves it? He told her, you guys approved it, and you're sitting there saying, no, we didn't.
No, there's nothing to approve yet because they didn't submit the paperwork.
So then why approve it at all? Why not withdraw it? Why give them the extra time? Why not drop?
That's a different, that's a good question.
Why not drop the hammer on them and make them come out and do this? Don't give them another 60 days. If that's still on the table, then why are we granting them any extension? Drop the hammer on them. Don't pay them. Make them get payment upon completion of a punch list. That's the way the contract should have been written to begin with, you know? But again, we can't go back, you know, we can't, can't go backwards and rewrite it, but what little there might be in there to be enforceable and to make them do what they're supposed to do, we better do. And from this point on, we better make sure that it's done first.
So if they, if they didn't ask for the extension, then how did the paperwork get executed to give them a 60-day extension? Because we were never told. So this is the question. Who, did we go to DOLI and say, all right, you're not going to be done by October 1st? We'll give you a 60-day? Like, who typed up the paperwork? Who offered that? Did they come to us and ask for the 60-day or did we offer the 60-day? Because we haven't been told, so I'm asking.
Yeah. Mr. Heinz, are you aware of the actual transaction of communication in that?
I don't know where the conversation was initiated, but, but I do know that, that DOLI did request more than the 60 days. The 60 days was what was extended as part of the change order.
Yeah, if I can go back, I don't know. But I remember the conversation, you know, because we asked that question during the authority meeting, and, and I remember one of you said, and it may not have been you, but said that, that, yeah, they had asked for more time. And I think that per the engineer's calculations, it was determined that this was the amount of time that was more accurate, the time that we had approved. I mean, does that sound about right? Does that sound like it's the, I seem to remember.
I don't remember that because, you know.
Because I remember they, we talked about a calculation and that this calculation, this is where, you know, with the, with the rain and all that other stuff, that this is where you guys came to as, you know, this is the date that, that we felt that everything should be done, you know, except for that final paving.
So the question is, did we go to DOLI, and I'm not getting the answer. Did we go to DOLI and say, you're not going to be finished, you know, we think we should do 60 days, and then they said, we're going to need more time? So the question is, who contacted who about not being finished and needed more time?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that. That wasn't.
How about staff?
No, ma'am, I'm not, I'm not aware of who. I would imagine that the contractor would have requested it. It seems to me as though there was some sort of a negotiation between the contractor and staff. Staff, by staff, I don't know who, I'm assuming Mr. Weaver, the director, would have negotiated and consulted with our engineers to determine that.
Well, Jason, didn't you say they were seeking?
That's what I'm saying. I think.
Seeking longer?
But who initiated? That's what, I can't get the answer. Did we go to DOLI and say, looks like you're not going to be done by October 1st, we're going to have to do an extension, we'll give you the 60 days? Did DOLI come to us and say, we're not going to be done by October 1st, we're going to need more time? Where did it get initiated?
Yeah, unfortunately, it didn't get initiated by me, so I don't know.
I don't see, I don't know why we're wasting time with this, because they're going to need an extension. And we're going to talk to them tomorrow. The question from Mr. Packer was, is there a way we could slam the hammer down and not give an extension? And what would the ramifications be of that? Which I guess is either they, they're going to, they're going to buckle down and take care of this project, but then they're going to abandon these other projects. I guess I'm asking, is it realistic? Would they drop what they're doing elsewhere and come in here? Or do our streets remain unpaved? Like, what is the realistic ramification of that?
I mean, I don't have that answer. I know you're coming looking at me.
Well, I know you don't, yeah.
But again, it goes back to, one, do they want another contract with Lower Paxton Township? Because if they do, it would certainly be in their best interest to finish up, you know, and finish it properly and in a timely manner. Because if they don't, I don't, I don't see you guys want, you know, issuing many contracts to somebody that you've had issues with in the past. So, I mean, if there's some sort of worry on that, or he said there's, you know, some sort of clause, I assume, in the contract that if they bail out, you can bring somebody else in. You know, I don't know who that would be, obviously.
It gets complicated.
It sure, it sure does.
We have to.
But what's complicated now is, as Mr. Blaine explained, and, you know, I had the guy today come, because, you know, my driveway needs paved, and he's like, well, you know, I could come and I could do some of it, but the concrete work has to be done before, you know? So like, one thing is hinging on another, and, and it's not that we don't see anybody in there working, but for the amount of concrete work that needs done, they have one crew of three or four guys. And the paving guy told me, he said, they're holding me up on many different paving projects because they are moving at such a slow pace. Okay, so the, so the 60-day, I don't care what number you throw on it, till the weather probably gets bad, there's no way. And that's what the paving guy said. And he said, come November, they'll shut down the asphalt plants if it gets too cold, and then he can't do anything.
They shut down the end of October and like last year, we had a couple, couple weeks into November.
Temperatures, he told me.
All right.
I had that discussion with him today.
Well, let's, Mr. Gutschall, you'll have your discussion. If you can get a history of who asked for what, when, that'd be nice too. But I'd rather look forward. Any hammers we have? Pull them out?
We have, we have to have answers at this point. I know we keep saying contract and patience, but at this point, we have to have answers.
I'm not going to mislead people and say that we have a magic weapon if we don't have it. I'm going to be honest, but.
Well, we misled them by saying December 1st at the authority meeting.
Nobody misled, no one misled. Let's not go down that road. Let's try to get it done and fix it and do what we got to do that, that contract is written, you know, if there's any holes in the contract that we got to do next time that we do it. But let's just keep, keep moving forward, is my request.
Is there anybody else under public comment that would like to speak? Yes, if you could come to the podium and your name and address, please.
How you doing? Scott Hawkins, 5904 Palmer Drive. I believe you saw my mailbox situation last week. It's still the same. My mailbox is on top of, on top of the ground, like three or four feet high. Big, huge holes. Put a couple cones out, you know? I don't feel comfortable. I work in an insurance company. I don't feel comfortable with the safety situation. With regards to your comment earlier, the concrete guys, I personally observed them laying underneath my neighbor's tree for about two hours today. So we're not really doing a lot of work. You know, like I said, I'm not sure who's supervising these guys, but I don't get a two-hour lunch break. And if it was me, I would be personally offended if they, I saw five guys laying underneath my, on my property, laying underneath the tree. I don't think they went to the homeowner and asked them if they could lay underneath their tree for two hours. So there's not a whole lot of work getting done out there. I work from home and I see a lot of laying around and a lot of sitting around. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Or public comment? Okay. Chairman and board members comments? Board members, do you have any comments? I would just like to thank Jessica Stotter. She's our victim witness employee down in the police department through Dolphin County. She had an excellent program over at Heroes Grove, Heroes Grove last Thursday night on the victim witness program in Dolphin County. So she did a fantastic job with that. We want to welcome Community Service Group to our township. It's a psychiatric rehab on East Park Drive. So we want to thank them for choosing Lower Paxton Township. The closest other one is up in Carlisle and the other one is down in Lancaster. So we're happy to have them for choosing the township. Okay, next on the agenda, we have action to approve Ender's Insurance as the township's executive, excuse me, excuse me, exclusive broker of record for property casualty and related insurances for the township for a period of three years. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Over the summer, as the board is aware, we evaluated our brokerage relationship and we had contracted with Ender's Insurance. Management had executed a contract with the firm for price reductions and some changes in physical services with them. This is kind of a catch-up effort in relation to an item that selective insurance needs in order to quote us to get a confirmation of an actual action and letter that Shelley had helped prepare for us in relation to that appointment. So this basically is an action to ratify the actions of management in relation to that contract effective July 15th, 2024, which would place Ender's Insurance here in Lower Paxton Township as the township's exclusive broker for those property and casualty insurances.
Okay, do I have any questions from the board for Mr. Miller? Okay, all right. With that, do I have a motion to approve Ender's Insurance as the township's exclusive broker?
I'll make it. Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one, I will be relinquishing the chair for personal reasons, and Mr. Zumis will be handling the next agenda item.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. So it's time to call the bullpen to the mound. And we need to take action on Resolution 2024-22 authorizing the submission of the Sider Press Station Sewer Planning Module to the Pennsylvania Department of whatever. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes. Mr. Zumis, thank you very much. Members of the board, as the board does from time to time, before the board this evening is action on this resolution, which basically updates the township's sewer planning activities to include the new estimated consumption for the soon-to-be-developed Sider Press Station. It is estimated that this 110 single-family residential dwelling unit, residential tract will estimate, will increase our sewer output by approximately 44,000 GPD, which is approximately 250 EDUs. And this action tonight allows the township's official sewer plan to be updated to include that additional sewer output. So it has been reviewed by township engineer and staff and is prepared for board action this evening.
Board members, any comments, questions? Public, any comments, questions? We have a motion. And Shelley, could we have a roll call vote?
We still have to. We have a motion on table, second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be abstaining for personal reasons.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to adopt Resolution 2024-23, authorizing the submission of the Wingstop at 4917 Jonestown Road, again, with the sewer planning module to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Mr. Gutsho.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, similarly, this action allows the update to the township's official sewer plan to include the new output for the soon-to-be-renovated and opened Wingstop at 4917 Jonestown Road. This is an existing building, it's within a strip center, I believe is the former Sherwin-Williams storefront, and so this is going to allow increased sewer outflow for the new restaurant. This is based, an estimated output of 800 GPD, which equates to about four new EDUs. And this has been reviewed by the township engineer and staff and is in order for board execution at this time.
Any questions from the board?
Just comments, in that little shopping center next to Pep Boys on Route 22.
Yes, right where Sherwin-Williams. So I have a question, is it all takeout, or will there be eat-in also?
I personally don't know the answer.
Well, I was just curious, because it's a sewer, you know.
Yeah. I'm personally not aware, ma'am, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-23?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements? Does anybody have any announcements? Okay. Our next meeting, business meeting, will be next week, September 17th, at 7:00, and there is a workshop rate at 5:30. Mr. Gutsho? Okay. So there is a workshop at 5:30 next week, that'll be open to the public, and that'll be in Room 74. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.